We'll get. This meeting of the Aurora City Council for December tenth, twenty twenty four is hereby called to order with a clerk. Please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Donal.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bog.
Here.
Alderwoman Bead.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
Is their motion approved and appoint the Sergeant of Arms for this meeting?
So much.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Muhammad.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Tonight, we're honored to have the state championed Aurora Gators here with us. Big round of applause. So we're gonna ask our audience and council to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we're gonna ask the guys to lead us in the pledge. Ready? Have Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as we are.
If we could please stay standing. The invocation will be led by Ward nine Alderman, Edward Bog.
Let's power heads. Father, we come before you this evening as the Aurora City Council. We ask you for strength and wisdom as we do the work of the citizens and businesses in our great city. Lord, we ask you to bless our first responders, our police, our fire. Bless all those who have served and are serving currently to keep our country safe. Again, we ask you for wisdom and insight as we do your will. Pray all this in the name of your son. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Alderman.
Mr. Muhammad, I see we have a room full of young people here with us today. So I'll let you continue on with our presentations and committee fairs this evening.
Appreciate it. And of course, always again, like we did last week, like we do regularly around this city, those four words, the champs are here. Another round of applause for the Aurora Gators eleven U. These young men had an undefeated season and clinched the state championships with the Pop Warner Chicagoland State Championship. And they are coached by none other than our retired APD Officer Derrick Smith. Before we bring the mayor down, we just want to tell you guys, we're so proud of you. You make the city proud. You helped to put us on the map. And we look forward to watching you continue to grow throughout the rest of your middle school and in high school careers and above and beyond. I know you make your parents happy and proud, your coaches and the entire Gators organization. We're also joined today, and we'll meet them shortly, but assistant coach, Rob Leskivar and Drake Spears. And we have the leadership of the Aurora Gators organization. There's several teams in the organization. We have Vice President Clifton Smith. And he takes the lead of the organization, pumped new life back into it. A number of years ago, the president Drew Tolliver. If the last name sounds familiar, I see they're looking there. That's Alderman Tolliver's brother there as well. We're so proud of everything that you guys do. And there are others who are proud of you, the entire community. And we reached out to a number of friends in the sports world, like Taylor Rapp, Super Bowl champ for the NFL Buffalo Bills. He was drafted in twenty nineteen and won the Super Bowl while he was playing with the Rams. And Taylor has a message for you guys.
Hey, what's up? It's Taylor Rapp here from the Buffalo Bills. I want to wish you congratulations to the Aurora Gators eleven U football team for clinching the twenty twenty four Chicagoland Pop Warner Illinois State Championship. Shout out to you guys. I know you guys worked very, very hard this season as you guys notched a undefeated season. So just want to wish you guys huge congratulations, all the hard work you guys put in. Hopefully, you guys had a great time, had a lot of fun this year with all your friends. You know, give a big shout out. Thank you to all your coaches for putting in all the work too. But you know, I want to wish you guys congratulations again. I hope you guys have a happy holidays.
Super Bowl champ Taylor Rapp, everybody. Giving you love. So proud of you. And what's better than a one-time Super Bowl champ than a two-time Super Bowl champ? Brian McFadden, NFL player, played college ball for Florida State Seminoles and was selected by the Pittsburgh Steelers in the second round of the twenty oh five draft. He earned two Super Bowl rings during his time with the Steelers. And Brian has a message for you as well.
What's up, everyone? This is Brian McFadden, two-time Super Bowl champion with the Pittsburgh Steelers. Just wanted to congratulate the Aurora Gators, the eleven U football team for clinching the twenty twenty four Chicagoland Pop Warner Illinois State Championship. I heard the Gators, they had an undefeated season, dominated from start to finish. They were extremely hard to bring the trophy home to Aurora, Illinois. Shouts out to the eleven U Gators football team. I applaud you for your achievement, the dedication, being consistent and diligent and making sure you take care of your business. And most importantly, bringing home a big time championship. I hope the parents, everyone who supported the eleven U team are overly elated about what you guys were able to do. And most importantly, sustaining a level of success that became championship-like pedigree. Once again, shouts out to you guys. I know how I feel to win a few championships. I know you guys are smiling from ear to ear and you should be, you should be because you're deserving of all the praise you receive. But don't get complacent just because you get one. That doesn't mean you can't get more. Just remember that. Keep it going.
All right, two-time Super Bowl champ Brian McFadden. We love you guys. Mayor Irvin, if you could please join us down front. Tonight, we have for you, you got your bling and you already got your championship rings. But we have individual trophies for you, certificates from the mayor and medals. But we're gonna start by honoring our coaches. And we're gonna ask the president and vice president to join the mayor down front as well.
One more time, people, the champs are here. Give it up for the Aurora Gators, making things happen here in the city of Aurora.
All right, we're gonna begin with our award. Again, head coach Derrick Smith. Big round of applause. Come on down, Derrick. Derrick, next to the mayor.
One more time for Derrick Smith.
Assistant coach, Rob Leskivar. Big round of applause, coach. And there we go. And assistant coach Drake Spears. All right, thank you so much. Round of applause for our coaching staff. We appreciate you. We're gonna ask the coaches to come back. You can leave your awards standing to the right side of the mayor or to the mayor's left. And we're gonna ask, we're gonna call you up in numerical order. To the parents, congratulations. We know that some of them are your biological sons, but they're all your team's sons. So we want to cheer them, each and every one of them on as they come down and receive their medals and their awards. So you'll start here with the vice president, the president, and then the mayor. Take a picture with the mayor as well. All right, big round of applause for number one, Eli Dees.
Eli.
All right, individual pictures there. Eli Dees, number one. All right, Eli, you can step on the stage behind you. There we go. All right, number two, Justin Taylor. Another round of applause for Justin Taylor. All right, number three, Amari Sloan. Another round of applause for Amari Sloan. Number four, Kaden Warren. All right, and number five, Ellis Hagan. Another round of applause for Ellis Hagan. This next young man, we honored him last year as the state wrestling champ. Number eight, Alex Leon. Another round of applause for Alex. Number ten, Elijah Milan. All right, number eleven, Majorsay Fowler Barrett. Not here, big round of applause. We still show him love. It's okay, they're, 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 they're on their names. Number twelve, Cameron Kennedy. Another round of applause for Cameron. Number thirteen, Colton Moreno. Another round of applause for Colton. I don't think the next ones are here, but we're gonna shout them out anyway. Number fourteen, Marcus Walker. Big round of applause. Number sixteen, Angelo Velasquez. And number seventeen, Maximus Anderson. Another round of applause for Maximus. Number eighteen, LaShawn Sturgis. Another round of applause for LaShawn. Up next, number twenty-two, Aiden Vazquez. That was number twenty-two, Aiden Ayala. Big round of applause, Aiden Ayala. Next, number twenty-five, Alberto Vazquez. Another round of applause for Alberto. All right, we've got the final four. Number twenty-eight, Jordan Carter. There we go. Big round of applause for Jordan. Next, number fifty-two, Mason Leskivar. Another round of applause for Mason. Next, number seventy-seven, Isaac Smith. Another round of applause for Isaac. And rounding out the team of twenty, number eighty-four, Jonathan LaRoca. Another round of applause for Jonathan. All right, we're gonna ask the guys to come on down to the front. Big round of applause for your state championship Gators. Come on down. Big, keep the applause going, parents. These are our state champions. Do a group picture and then we have two more speakers. All right, we're gonna hear from Coach Smith now. Coach Smith, come on down. No, you guys can stay, stay up there, stay up there.
Hello, all. How's everyone doing? Let's give them another hand, a round of applause. First, I want to thank Mayor Irvin for inviting us. We really appreciate it. And the councilman, thank you guys for inviting us. I don't know what to say. It was a long season. It started back in August first. And we always speak about working hard. And these young men came and worked hard for us every day. Just putting up with me is a, is a job within itself. But at the beginning of the year, I told these young men that we could do something special. And I think we did. We went eleven and oh. I wish we could claim an undefeated season, but we played in the regionals and we got beat, but that's okay. We still got our state champion, state championship and, hey, third in the regional in this area, Chicagoland. No, the region, third in the region. Can't say, can't say nothing about that. Can't say nothing bad about it. So let's give these guys another round of applause. I don't want to leave out the board. Drew and Big Homie, thank you guys a lot. Clifton, I think that's his real name, Clifton Smith. Hey Drew, thank you. I know we, it was a long season, but we battled and battled and battled. And we was all fighting for the same thing. And I can't, can't forget my coaches, staff. Them guys did a great job. It wasn't all about Derrick Smith. It was about these gentlemen and them guys back there. Okay, thank you guys again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you. And the mayor, we have a proclamation. One sec.
Thank you, Coach.
It is my honor to read this proclamation for the Aurora Gators eleven U Day, Saturday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Whereas the Aurora Gators football team had a stellar twenty twenty four season that brought unparalleled success, unprecedented teamwork, and an undefeated record. Whereas the eleven U Swamp Kings domi- Swamp King. And dominated the, the gridiron during the regular season and into the playoffs. And whereas the Aurora Gators eleven U football team proudly clinched the twenty twenty four Pop Warner's eleven U State Championship, representing the Aurora Gators organization and the city of Aurora. Whereas the twenty twenty four championship team includes Maximus, Aiden, Jordan, Eli, Mashaw, Maja, Ellis, Cameron, Jonathan, Alex, Mason, Elijah, Colton, Amari, Isaac, LaShawn, Justin, Alberto, Angelo, Marcus, and Kaden. And led by coaches, did I leave out nobody, anybody, did I? I get all y'all. And led by the coaches Derrick Smith, Robert Leskivar, and Drake Spears. And whereas with the state championship, the players of the Aurora Gators eleven U team have continued to raise the bar and set a higher standard, making all of Aurora proud. Now therefore, I may, Richard C. Irvin, recognize this weekend's team celebration and do hereby proclaim Saturday, December fourteenth, as Aurora Gator eleven U Day in the city of Aurora. Let's give it up. The champs are here.
Awesome. Let's do one more group picture. All right, make some noise, parents and supporters. Time for your photos, if you want to grab a shot.
Everybody look to the left.
All right, we're gonna do one rolling video. Make some noise, Gators. Congratulations, Gators. We'll see you on Saturday on, as Aurora Gators eleven U Day now, on Saturday, December fourteenth. Congratulations, thank you.
All right, folks, we've had the most exciting portion of our city council meeting this evening, hanging out with the Aurora Gators, making things happen and celebrating you guys' victory and becoming state champs. We're gonna give you opportunity, I know you probably have to go to school tomorrow. We're gonna give you an opportunity to file out before we start the regular course of business. If you want to stay, please stay and hang out with us. But if you gotta go and get ready for your long day and in school tomorrow learning, then I'll give you a few minutes to file out. And as you file out, we're gonna clap for you one more time. Let's give the Aurora Gators another round of applause. The champs are here. You're very welcome. Bye now. You're welcome, brother. All right. All right.
All right, let's go on to the regular course for our business, go on to mayoral appointments. Madam Clerk, will you please read the first item under mayoral appointments?
Twenty-four zero eight nine eight, a resolution authorizing the appointment of Dan Housefeld as a member to the Black Grant Working Committee.
There has been a motion made by Alderman Messiakos, seconded by Alderman Franco, oh, sorry, Alderman Smith, I'm sorry. I'm a little slow on the draw today. Any questions, comments? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll. I'm sorry. No.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Do we have Dan Housefeld in the room with us? Let's give him a round of applause. Sir, thank you for your commitment. I'm gonna come down there, if you don't mind, take a quick picture with you.
Another round of applause.
All right, let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do.
Will you please read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Will you call the first speaker wishing to offer public comment, please?
Adam Pauley.
Mr. Pauley, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you. I'm here once again asking about the harm reduction with the Health Department, at the Transportation Center, and with our police and throughout our city. I'm getting incredibly frustrated walking in here and talking to staff, hearing that it's on pause or that no additional action has been taken on it. The Health Department's ready to go, they've got the documents ready. It's something that we could have done months ago. And I just don't understand what the lack of action is stemming from. Actions speak louder than words. And the action, or lack thereof, makes it really seem like the health and well-being of our people isn't a priority. I know that it is, but it definitely doesn't seem that way. We're responsible for the deteriorating conditions that are happening under us. Every five minutes, somebody dies of an overdose. And every time that happens, that is an additional blot on our immortal souls. We always talk about the state of our city or the state of our union. What's the state of our soul? Can we repair that? I don't know. And I'm incredibly frustrated at the lack of action and at the lack of things that have been going on with this. We were promised a mental health symposium. There hasn't seemed to be any action on that either. I would really like to know what's going on and if there's any way that I can help with moving this forward so that we can get this done. This should have been done months ago. Our people really need this. And this is incredibly important. It's important for our souls, too. I yield.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Greg Bolger.
Mr. Bolger, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you. This is in reference to twenty-four zero seven zero eight. My name is Greg Bolger, and I live in the single-family subdivision next door to the proposed development. Myself and several neighbors have come up to this podium multiple times over the past few weeks, expressing how difficult and dangerous it can be to exit our community. The developer's own traffic engineer has also stood up here and stated taking a left out of our subdivision is difficult and can't be sugar-coated. Some may argue that additional cars this project will add won't make the issue any more dangerous than it already is. I couldn't disagree with this anymore. Not too long ago, my son, who works at the Jewel down the street from us, said he was waiting to make a left onto Eola Road. And there was one car behind him. This car behind him did not have the patience to wait their turn, so they made a dangerous decision to go around him and make their left, as if he wasn't even there. I'm thankful my son noticed this in time, otherwise they both could have gone out into traffic at the same time. This project could add around a hundred cars to the mix, which is a big increase from the forty cars my community might have in and out. As a result, I think it's reasonable to believe there will be multiple cars lined up to take a left onto Eola Road at certain times of the day. I would suspect most of us here are drivers, and I'm sure we've all been in that high-pressured situation of making a turn onto a busy road. Most of us would probably agree that the stress of the situation multiplies when we know cars are behind us waiting for their turn. To offset the number of cars, we asked the developer to lower the density of their community, but the request was rejected. I don't know how the votes will end up tonight, but if I was sitting in an Alderman seat, and because there is no traffic light coming to save the day, I would err on the side of caution, and I would attach my name to a null vote. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker.
Bhavik Shah.
Mr. Shah, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Sure. Hey, my name is Bhavik Shah. This is regard to twenty-four oh seven oh eight and oh nine. I reside at two nine zero five Riverstone Court. I'm also the worried parent of the seventeen-year-old who frequently makes left turn on the intersection Greg just told about. Firstly, I really want to express my gratitude for all your attention to our concerns over the past few months. We have come multiple times, and you have listened to us and helped us. I'm really thankful to that. We had a meeting with the builder and their legal representative last Thursday. They modified their plans to address the proximity issues, which benefited few of our neighbors, including myself. We also discussed replacing the eight-foot fence with a well-designed landscaping barrier. I think that can help. But I'm very disappointed that no actions were taken to address the density concern, which is the only solution we see as of now to mitigate the risk on the intersection of Waterstone and Eola. Even the lower downplayed our safety concerns by suggesting that there are issues of convenience rather than genuine safety threats. The minimization tactic undermines the real danger we face. The split decision a teenager must make to wait for another empty space to take left or do it quickly when someone is behind you is not convenient. Someone having cars behind you, like some cars behind you, and after two minutes of waiting to make the same split decision is not convenient. After waiting in line ahead of you to take left and you put it to that patience game you need is not convenient. The potential harm to a loved ones is real and should not be dismissed as a convenience. Companies like Polte may prioritize profit over community safety, but you have the authority to value our lives over developing near our neighborhood. We should not have to live with regret if something tragic occurs in our community when it could have been prevented by all of us having to do part of it with your decision. Should this project proceed and result in serious accident, I'll return, I promise I'll return to remind all of us that we could have done really differently in this one. I really urge all of you to not approve this project unless we secure a commitment to low-density residential housing. Please support us in our efforts against large corporations like Polte. Thank you.
Do you have any additional speakers, Madam Clerk?
We do, Mr. Mayor. The next speaker is Janine Keating.
Ms. Keating, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you.
Feel free to readjust the microphone if you need to.
Thank you. I am back, and this is regarding twenty-four oh seven oh eight, twenty-four seven, twenty-four oh seven oh nine as well. I'm here again to ask the city council to reject the previous and currently proposed development plans for six-twenty North Eola Road. I'm sure the developer has reached out to most, if not all, of you to show you how wonderful their plan is. However, there was no reduction in density. As to whether they can lower their density and still get their ROI, frankly, is not our concern. I understand businesses need to make a profit than find another property. Data and numbers can always be made to look good on paper, but until our concerns are lived in real time, in real life, it's not easy to understand the points we are making. The builder stated they do not keep data on demographics and have assured us that they expect plenty of retirees and downsizers will likely purchase in the townhome development, thus reducing our traffic and safety concerns, but I question that. If that is their logic, then all our concerns with density, which lead to our traffic and safety concerns, are just as valid without data as well. Our real-life, everyday experience with these issues is just as valid. How many of you have actually been out to our neighborhood and really taken a look at what the impact will be? Yes, you may vote, yet you may vote yes for this project from only seeing it on paper and the big-money developer getting your ear, whereas those of us living in Aurora and paying taxes and voting here do not necessarily get the same courtesy. I'm aware of four Alderman women, maybe a fifth, that have been out to our neighborhood to walk it down and see for themselves the issues we are raising. They have also experienced a left turnout from Eola and Waterstone. And adding the proposed level of density will only exacerbate the safety issues. Again, the issue is with the density, and no changes were made or proposed that addressed those concerns. No reduction in density has the following negative impacts. Safety along Old Eola Road and primarily at the intersection of Eola and Waterstone. Additional infusion of traffic to and from Eola Road, including any new residents, their visitors, deliveries, et cetera. Proximity and privacy concerns along the properties of five of the homeowners. The most recent plan proposes only benefits for three of the five impacted homeowners and was low-hanging fruit. Privacy along Old Eola Road because of the increase in traffic. My summary is, do we really need another townhome development along Eola Road, especially at this location and everything that goes along with that? Go ahead and allow a data center or similar business on the property. At least the traffic and safety concerns would be significantly mitigated, and the proximity and privacy issues won't be any worse than the current proposed townhome development. Maybe not as pretty, but still. For anyone with a yes vote, we would expect courtesy as to the reason why. Thank you.
Call the next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Vince Mammon.
Mr. Manning, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now. Feel free to readjust the microphone if you need to.
Good, thank you. And I agree with my neighbors, I'm here about the Eola Preserve development. I share all the same concerns as they do. I guess one of my biggest questions is, do we have a need for another multifamily housing development in the area? If you look in a two, three-mile radius, there's so much going on with multifamily. We have, I mean, currently the development at Fox Valley Mall, how many are they adding? Chelsea Manor off of Seventy-Fifth and Commons, where they're adding a lot of units. And if you go on their webpage, they're having incentives now where they're offering seventy-three thousand dollars off just to move inventory. It doesn't seem like there's really a need to add more to the current availability. Now, another concern, obviously, is the safety along Eola Road, especially coming out Waterstone onto Eola. But again, it's the overall congestion on Eola Road. And that stretches from, you know, like Eighty-Eight all the way down to Ogden, where we're looking at additional traffic from all the developments that have been approved along Bilter, Liberty, New York, all the way down Eola, all the way to looking at Lincoln Prairie, Lincoln Crossing, I believe a new one at Farnsworth and Ogden, the Wheatland Crossing. All these are gonna continue to feed traffic onto Eola Road and add to the congestion. And it's a concern as far as safety there, but also with the proposed fire station that's going in Station Number Nine between New York and Liberty. How's that gonna affect response time and everything else if we continue to add more and more and the county doesn't have any plans to address this in the near term? It looks like it's probably five to ten years out before they address the capacity issue on Eola Road. And not to mention, I guess, the development itself, when we look at the size of these buildings, we're looking at these things that are probably forty, fifty yards long, thirty-five, forty feet high, big, huge buildings. And some of these are forty, forty-five feet off the back of some of my neighbors' houses. It's a terrible thing to have to look at. Even if you try to, you know, provide screening with landscaping and everything else, it's still not attractive, and it probably will affect property values. And to close, not to mention, here's the thing with this development, it's gonna displace a lot of my little friends, my hawks, my owls, the deer family that runs around the neighborhood all the time, the little possums we see.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any additional speakers, Madam Clerk?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's go on to the next portion of the agenda, public hearing. Madam Clerk, you read the first item under public hearing.
Twenty-four zero nine four one, a public hearing pursuant to thirty-five ILCS two hundred slash eighteen dash fifty-five through eighteen dash ninety for a proposed tax increase for the city of Aurora, Special Service Area Sixty-three, Near West Side Lighting.
Does staff have a presentation for this public hearing item?
Good evening, Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Special Service Area Number Sixty-three, also known as Near West Side Lighting Special Service Area, was established to provide financing for decorative street lighting improvements in Wards Two and Ward Four. It does have a maximum tax rate for the levy of nine point four cents per hundred dollars of VAV. There was eight thousand eight hundred dollars that was generated by the Special Service Area levy for the twenty-twenty-three levy collected during calendar year twenty-twenty-four. We're requesting a levy of ten thousand one hundred dollars for the twenty-twenty-four levy to be collected during calendar year twenty-twenty-five. That does represent a one thousand three hundred dollar increase in the levy request, and that totals about fourteen point seven seven percent. Under state law, we do need to hold the public hearing when a particular tax levy does exceed an increase of five percent from the prior year, so that's why we're holding the public hearing this evening. This particular special service area does expire with the twenty-twenty-four levy to be collected during calendar year twenty-twenty-five. The request for the increase is to collect the total amount that is outstanding that was financed by the Special Service Area improvements. As I mentioned, it expires as of twelve thirty-one twenty-five. We will not have the ability to levy the Special Service Area next year to collect the balance due. So we're trying to collect the remaining balance. So the tax levy ordinance for this particular special service area does appear on the consent agenda a little later on this evening. We do recommend approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Donnell?
Much of this is in the fourth ward. I'm just curious, what this increase will affect each homeowner dollar-wise?
We do anticipate that this will be about a three dollar and fifty cent annual increase. It would take the average homeowner's Special Service Area portion of their tax bill from about forty-one dollars to just under forty-five dollars. So about three dollars and fifty cents annually, a thirty cents a month.
And after this year, that will be done?
That would be done, and it would not be levied in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? There's been a motion to close public hearing by Alderman Smith, seconded by Franco. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
All right, all right. Madam Clerk, that particular hearing is adjourned. Madam Clerk, will you please read the next item under public hearings?
Twenty-four zero nine four two, a public hearing pursuant to thirty-five ILCS two hundred slash eighteen dash fifty-five through eighteen dash ninety for a proposed tax increase for the city of Aurora, Special Service Area Sixty-five, East View Estates.
Does staff have a presentation for this public hearing item?
Yes. Similarly, Special Service Area Sixty-five, East View Estates, was established to provide financing for curb and gutter, sidewalk, drive approach, landscaping, and decorative lighting improvements in Ward Number One. There is a maximum tax rate that's established for this particular SSA of twenty-three cents per hundred dollars of VAV during twenty-twenty-three, excuse me, for the twenty-twenty-three levy collected during calendar year twenty-twenty-four. There was eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars generated. We are requesting a levy of nine thousand four hundred and ninety dollars, an increase of about a thousand and fifty dollars, or approximately twelve point four four percent. Again, this particular SSA does expire as of twelve thirty-one twenty-five, and we are looking to collect the entire nine thousand four hundred and ninety dollar balance due from this particular SSA. We do anticipate that this particular increase would add approximately five to six dollars to the special service area portion of the average residence tax bill for SSA sixty-five. We do recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. This ordinance does also appear on the consent agenda later this evening.
Any questions from the council? Been a motion by Alderman Smith to close, second by Alderman Lash. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alder Woman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alder Woman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alder Woman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
This hearing is adjourned. Next, we'll hear both the consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda in full. Will the clerk please read both agendas in full?
Twenty-four zero seven four-two, a resolution authorizing the execution, execution of an encroachment easement and maintenance agreement for eleven twenty-five Aurora Avenue. Twenty-four zero seven nine nine, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for the fiscal year January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four for special service area number one. Twenty-four zero eight zero zero, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for fiscal year January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, special service area number forty-four. Twenty-four zero eight zero one, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for the fiscal year January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, special service area number sixty-three. Twenty-four zero eight zero two, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for the fiscal year January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, special service area number sixty-five. Twenty-four zero eight zero three, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for the fiscal year January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, special service area number sixty-six A. Twenty-four zero eight zero four, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for fiscal year January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, special service area number sixty-six B. Twenty-four zero eight zero five, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for the fiscal year January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, special service area number sixty-six C. Twenty-four zero eight zero six, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for fiscal year January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, special service area number sixty-six D. Twenty-four zero eight zero seven, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for this fiscal year January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, special service area number sixty-seven. Twenty-four zero eight zero eight, an ordinance levying certain special service area taxes for the fiscal year January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, special service area number twenty-four. Twenty-four zero eight zero nine, an ordinance authorizing and providing for the abatement of general obligation bond tax levies, twenty twenty-four tax levy extension. Twenty-four zero sub, zero eight seven eight, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into an agreement with Blink Network of Bowie, Maryland in the amount of sixty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents to furnish and install five dual-port electric vehicle chargers at the new public works facility and allow city staff to negotiate the installation of additional Blink electric vehicle chargers at other locations throughout the city to establish a single standardized charging network and revenue collection system. Twenty-four zero eight seven nine, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to utilize Sourcewell and Omnia Cooperative purchasing contracts to purchase equipment for the new public works facility and allow for several, several additional future equipment purchases. Twenty-four zero eight nine zero, a resolution to re-adopt the Illinois Emergency Management Mutual Aid System Agreement. Twenty-four zero eight nine six, a resolution authorizing the mayor or his designee to sign memorandums of understanding for placement of school crossing guard shelters within the city right-of-way. Twenty-four zero nine zero one, a resolution to approve the contract from Ray O'Haraan for the purchase of clothing and uniforms for the fire department for twenty twenty-five. Twenty-four zero nine zero three, an ordinance annexing property located at sixteen eighty-one Jericho Road to the city of Aurora pursuant to a water service agreement. Twenty-four zero nine one one, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to execute a change order increasing the contract with R.C. Wegman for the River Edge Park Phase Two expansion to twenty-three million five hundred twenty-four thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars. Twenty-four zero nine one seven, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to execute a contract with National Technologies in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars to reroute fiber at River Edge Park. Twenty-four zero nine one nine, an ordinance annexing property located at sixteen ninety-one Jericho Road to the city of Aurora pursuant to a water service agreement. Twenty-four zero nine three one, a resolution accepting the improvements and maintenance security for Sullivan Road roadway improvement east of Sullivan Road Roundabout and west of Route Thirty-One. Twenty-four zero nine five eight, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four city council meeting. Twenty-four zero nine five nine, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, December third, twenty twenty-four, special city council meeting. So moved. Second.
All right, before we entertain that motion, a second to accept both the consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda, are there, are there any questions or motions to remove any items from either direct to council consent agenda or the consent agenda? There being none, a motion from Alderman Smith and second by Alderman Garza on the floor. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alder Woman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alder Woman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alder Woman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The consent agenda and direct to council consent agenda are both approved. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda unfinished business. Madam Clerk, you read the first item under unfinished business.
Twenty-four zero seven zero eight, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development, approving the Eola Preserve Plan Description and amending Chapter Forty-nine of the Code of Ordinances by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of R four A and O S one for the property located at six twenty North Eola Road. So moved.
Second.
The motion may be by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Questions or discussions on this item? Questions or discussions on this item? Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the items that are residents brought forward, and I've been out there, and I think this has been discussed pretty frequently, but the one issue that hasn't been addressed is the public safety issue here without having a stoplight at that. I think adding more density isn't what we need, so I'll be a no vote on this in the next agenda item.
Any other questions, discussions? Alderman Bate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a comment, and so based on concerns brought up by the residents, we had a talk with the lawyers and the petitioner, and some of the concerns that I had brought to them were removing N units from Lot Two and Three and move them somewhere else on the property. No patio overlooking the homes on the top floor of Unit Two and Lot Two and Three. And the third concern was having a fence to, in between these two developments. And then somebody had mentioned, so increase the height of the fence from six feet to eight feet. So I brought these concerns to them, and if we have a presentation, they have addressed all these three concerns. So first one was addressed by removing two units and moving them to another building, and there will be no patio overlooking these homes, that those were the closest homes to these, this new development. And the fence, for the fence, they are open to having landscaping or eight-foot fence. These were addressed, and the traffic concern was not in their hands. That is DuPage County Road, Eola is DuPage County Road, so for the additional light traffic signal, they gave us the data that it's not eligible currently, but we will continue to fight for that when there are more residents in this community. I did speak to another resident who's not here today, but he had mentioned if we could have additional safety things added on Eola by talking to DuPage County, if they can add a speed radar or let city add a speed radar so that we can see what speed people are driving at that location. The other thing they brought up was having a U-turn signal at the intersection of Eola and Liberty so that if somebody wants to make a right turn and then go left north on Eola, they're legally allowed to make a U-turn. These were the two things they brought up, and other than that, the petitioner has addressed all these, so just wanted to make a comment.
Why don't we go ahead with a presentation, and then we'll address all those issues that have not been directly addressed. Council, if you want to take that microphone over there, feel free to readjust the microphone, and staff can, can step up and talk a little bit about the issues that were brought up by the residents that will be affected by that, and that all those issues relayed to the developer and the issues that were addressed and those still outstanding. Go ahead. Mr. Alexandria?
Good evening, Alex Alexandra, Chief Management Officer.
Is your microphone not on?
I believe it is.
There you go.
Yep. Alex Alexandra, Chief Management Officer. So before I turn it over to staff and to the attorney from Pulte, I just want to thank Alderman Tolliver, Alderman Warman, and all of you who have participated recently in the new and additional discussions as we've tried to not only address the residents' concerns, but also look at the data and evidence and the willingness of the developer to make significant changes. So tonight, we wanted to bring you the results of those efforts. There's a few slides, I think, that Russ wants to go through, and then I'd like Tracy Vasek to talk about some other items, and then we'll come back and answer questions.
Go ahead. I think that puts it in my court. So again, Russ Whitaker, Rosenovan Whitaker, on behalf of the development team, I think everybody knows we've been grinding on this project. We were back, we were originally before the council at Committee of the Hole on October ninth. For the last two months, we've been grinding. We've turned over every rock trying to find solutions to problems. We're collaboratively with, with the Aldermen, with the residents, and with the staff to provide what we think are practical solutions. And as a result of that work, I think the project that's before you tonight is undeniably better than the project that was before you two months ago. At the end of the day, the goal here is to continue to build and develop Aurora. I think there were questions asked by residents of, do we need this? There is a housing shortage, not just in Aurora, not just in Illinois, but across the country. Everybody is talking about the price of housing, and the price of housing is driven by supply side issues. There is a, there is a dramatic need for additional housing to be constructed in Aurora in the region. We're moving as fast as we can to put approvals in place to be able to build those houses, but it is a very difficult process as, as you clearly see with, with all the work that goes into this. At the end of the day, the goal here is for Pulte to deliver fifty-four new high-end townhomes for the city of Aurora. The average price of these townhomes will approach five hundred thousand dollars, thereby increasing property tax base for the, for all of the underlying taxing districts. Most importantly, for the city of Aurora, the new residential population represents significant new spending power to support local businesses in the community and to drive additional sales tax revenue. If somebody could help me to flip to the next slide, I just wanted to level set on this one because I think everybody, everybody thinks about the, the development plan we've been working on, but the property we're purchasing is outlined here in red. I wanted to remind everyone that the property is twenty-one acres. Approximately eleven acres of the twenty-one is a wetland. Because it's a wetland doesn't mean that we can't develop in it. It means that there's additional restrictions for developing in it. We consciously decided not to develop in it, that we were better off preserving and protecting that wetland, and there will be strictures that are put in place through the final plat process with city staff in order to ensure that that wetland is preserved and protected into the future. Our homeowners association will own the wetland. Our homeowners will be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that wetland. But I think that's an important component to keep in mind here because there are a number of residents, both north of us, west of us, and south of us, who benefit from that wetland, and I think there's just general benefit associated with the wetland. I, I would note that with the, with the fifty-four dwelling units, we have a proposed density of two point five dwelling units an acre. I would point out for reference that Pulte's Meadow Ridge Townhomes back, constructed back in two thousand and twenty, have a density of seven point two five units, units an acre. This is not a dense development project. We're committed to resurfacing roads on Eola Road. We're improving the intersection of Waterstone Drive and Eola Road, and we're constructing a new right-out egress to Eola Road. I want to focus discussion, kind of as Alderman Bate did a second ago, on concessions since the original Committee of the Hole meeting. The topics break down into generally two categories. One is traffic, and the second is site plan or planning-related issues. First of all, with respect to traffic, I've heard the residents characterize it tonight as a safety issue. We have a traffic engineer who has prepared a traffic study. We've submitted that traffic study to the city of Aurora, who has traffic engineers who have reviewed the traffic study. We have also submitted the traffic study to DuPage County, who has traffic engineers who have reviewed the traffic study. None of those traffic engineers, who are professionals in their field, have said there is a safety issue. To the contrary, they have all said, they've all accepted the reports of the traffic study, and they have found that the intersection, that the roads had the capacity to handle the additional traffic created by this development. When we met with the residents, the residents who are here tonight last week, we were told that they would fully accept a project that was thirty single-family homes. Since then, we went back and we looked at, okay, well, what would the traffic be if it was thirty single-family homes? Because the premise of their request was, well, if it's thirty single-family homes, that's fewer homes than fifty-four townhomes, there must be less traffic. When we ran those numbers, it resulted in three fewer left-hand turns during the evening peak hour. Three. So we have a project that we're presenting tonight that solves a lot of issues. Does it solve every concern of the residents? No. Does it create a safety issue? No, it does not. We performed a traffic signal warrant analysis to go through and to prove out that a traffic signal was not warranted. I think most of the residents have come to the conclusion that the traffic study's not, or a, a traffic signal is not going to be installed in the near term or into the future. We worked with DuPage County trying to propose intersection improvements. We tried to modify the median in Eola Road. I think it was Alderman Bug who talked about being able to take that two-stage turn. We heard the comment, and we tried to dive in and create a practical solution. DuPage County came back and said no. They said it's a safe intersection today, that they will address functional issues in the future when they widen Eola Road. From there, we dove into the planning issues. We relocated two units, as, as has been talked about.
Wait, step back for a second. Before we talk about these units, you said Alderman Bug asked a question about traffic. Now explain that again one more time.
There was, there was a question about how two-stage turns are made from Water...
What is a two-stage turn?
A two-stage turn, I'm sorry, is where someone is making a left, leftbound turn from Waterstone onto Eola, and instead of going directly into traffic, they go into the center median, they stop, they pause, and then they enter traffic. So we were proposing to increase the width of that area so that they could more safely or easily make that turn. On, on the planning side, we've talked about, and you've seen the plans that show the increase in setback. I would note that fifteen-foot setback to the north is required by CO. I would note that 15-foot setback to the north is required by code. We came with 24. We've modified the plan, we're at 48. The 48 is twice what the single-family residents to the north have. From there, there was discussion about the rooftop terraces. We've eliminated rooftop terraces adjacent to the residences. We've addressed landscape. We're doubling the amount of landscape in lieu of an eight-foot fence, and we've finally placed rental restrictions so that not more than 30% of the units could be rented. So that, we've made material concessions in order to improve the project. We think it is a good project. We think it is a project that should move forward. We think it is a project that will help address housing issues in the city of Aurora.
Staff.
So just before I turn over to Tracy, Russ talked about some numbers, and I just want to again remind folks, and we provided this information, but the current state, from a revenue perspective, the current taxes total for these 21 acres is about $33,800. The significant portion of that goes to school district 204, right now of $21,615. The city gets $69,58. So in the proposed development at $475,000 of an average selling price, you have a total tax revenue of $694,849. So a significant jump in tax revenue. School district 204 would see the largest jump of $444,000 versus the $21,000. The city would get $143,000 a year, so over $110,000 more. But in terms of the further numbers of what will the 54 homes produce in terms, for example, of high-school-age students, sophomores through seniors who actually can drive, and is 3.75. So it's about four total students who would be driving. You have about 100 total people from this development. Tracy, would you come up and...
Yeah. Good evening, Tracy Vasek. I did want to just point out that your, there is three additional stipulations or conditions that have been placed on the preliminary plan, and I know that Russ went over them, but I just wanted to read them in the record. That buildings on Lot 1 and 2 shall not have rooftop terraces. That the eight-foot fence be constructed along the shared northern and eastern property line of Lot 15 between the single-family residents and Lot 1, 2, and 3 of this development. In lieu of the eight-foot solid fence that the petitioner can install approximately an additional two CTE per 100 feet for the buffer requirement, which basically turns out to be three additional trees per 100 feet. Said requirement shall be determined at final plan and plat time. I know that it has been brought up that it sounded like they wanted more of the landscaping, that they did the fence, but we gave both options, and we can determine that at final plan time. And then lastly, that their CC and Rs for the property include the provision that no more than 30% of the dwelling unit be rental units. So I did want to just add that, that we did add those as conditions.
If I could say one more thing about the landscaping, when we met with the residents, there was originally a discussion about an eight-foot tall fence. We thought it was a bad idea. We talked to the residents about that. We told them why we thought it was a bad idea. I committed to them that we, in lieu of the eight-foot fence, we would be willing to roughly double. What Tracy wrote is perfectly fine, but we intend to go beyond that. Like, we are making every effort to work with people here in order to get a project done. The commitment I made to these residents was that we would bring our landscape architect to a meeting. The landscape architect would sit down with each of the residents who were adjacent to the project, and we wouldn't just place three trees along the property line, but we would look at the context of their house and the improvements in their backyard, where the deck was located, where trees are being preserved, and we would develop a thoughtful landscape plan that addresses the site context. We understand. They've been there for a long time. They back up to a property. It's industrially, it's zone for manufacturing today, but they're seeing change. We understand that we're bringing that change, and we're responsible for addressing their concerns, and we have done everything possible in order to address those concerns, and we will not stop just by virtue of an approval this evening. We will continue to work with them through the final approval process, and we will continue to work with them through the construction process, and I think we have a longstanding reputation in the community of having delivered on those kind of promises. So I appreciate your time and consideration this evening.
Ms. Vasek, can we address some of those outstanding questions that Alderman Bade still have outstanding? Alderman Bade, if you can identify those individually, so we can address them one at a time, what are those things that are still outstanding?
So this was a new thing they brought up. So one was having a speed radar installed on Eola so the northbound as well as southbound traffic can see what speed they're...
If that's requested, if that was, if that's permitted by DuPage County, we've done it on other projects, we will pay for the speed reader on Eola.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, that's the key. That's something we could certainly look into. We can't commit to that tonight. That would be DuPage County's authorization. And if I may, from a public safety and traffic standpoint, this has been one of the more exhaustive processes to go back through not only our city's subject-matter experts, but the folks at the county and their experts. So everybody has been constantly talking throughout this whole time to figure out how we can prioritize and make things as safe as possible. We took Alderman Bug's suggestion back to DuPage County. They have rejected it.
The U-turn request?
Correct.
Has that been addressed? The U-turn request, right on to Eola? Then a U-turn at Liberty?
So again, that's something that we can go back if we have...
No, I think it's been, is somebody nodding their head? Has that been addressed?
Brian Mikowski, Engineering Department. U-turns are currently permitted at the intersection right now, and it is a protected green left, so they would be, they would be allowed to make a U-turn at that intersection without other traffic.
Is there signage that suggests that?
There is no sign.
No.
The sign doesn't, but usually signage for U-turns will prohibit U-turns.
Is there something we can request for, from DuPage, request it? That some signage be put there to say that U-turns are acceptable?
Yeah, and I guess there is one other sign that has like a U-turn arrow and a left-turn arrow. If we could ask them to request a replacement.
Like outside Matia Valley High School, they have a specific sign for U-turn.
Where it says left turn, and then there's a hand that says U-turn.
It shows permitted movements and shows a U-turn.
Exactly right. So let's request that.
Again, we have to request.
So there's some other outstanding issues. What are those?
These were the two.
Those are the two? So they have been addressed? Okay. All right. Mr. Alexandria, you want to finish up?
So again, I think we have shown that it's not just data and evidence, it's data and evidence supported by subject-matter experts in traffic safety and those who are responsible at the county, the city, and the developers' engineers. So our obligation for all of these is to bring forward as much of the full picture for all of you to decide what's the highest and best use there. And I think we have proven that, and the time taken and requested by the council to do our due diligence, I think, has brought forth and a lot more of these additional informations, especially the concessions. Not sure there are a lot of developers who would have been as patient and worked through with us and listened to residents and our alderpersons as much as Pulte. I know others that would have walked by now, others who would have maybe relied and fallen back on the zoning that's presently there, but they're not wanting to do that, and we certainly don't want that either.
Based on the presentation, any additional questions, comments, or discussion? Alderman Bug?
Yeah, thank you. First, I just want to say I definitely want to applaud, I mean, Pulte has taken every step that they can to move this forward, and I applaud you, Mr. Whitaker, and your team, and the efforts and phone calls that we've had. I understand my last statement last time, and that went to DuPage County. I've not had a chance to talk to my friends on that board. I have a very small portion at DuPage County, so, but I will be talking to them. This is, I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit, Mr. Whitaker, although the traffic study says, it does not create a unsafe turn. I made, I went back in my mind, as I mentioned before, my good friend is a general manager at WBIG, the property that Jack got purchased. So I've made at least one left turn a month for the last 19 years, so I know it, and I know it pretty well. Safe or unsafe? It's a challenging turn. Let's just put it that way. It's a very challenging turn, and that's why we brought forward to DuPage County, and they said no. My alderwoman, Alderman Bade, excellent suggestion of the right turn and adding the signage. I think that would help greatly that those residents know I can make a left turn and safely, and everybody else in the intersection know, now I can make a U-turn. When signage isn't there, you know, it's a question in everyone's mind. Can I make that U-turn? So if it's announced and it's known, I can make a safe right, I can make a safe U-turn, I believe that'd be very helpful. Again, in the hands of DuPage County, not us. And I hope that they heed these comments. I hope the residents have gone to DuPage County as you've come here. So I hate it when it's not in our own hands for us to make the decision and for us to make it safe. And let me ask this, I think Ken's sitting in the back row, right? My only question is, and I didn't know, you know, I didn't know the answer to this, that's why I have the question. Where does our control authorization end on Eola Road going north? Does it end at New York?
That's correct.
Okay, it ends at New York, okay. So again, these things are in the hands of DuPage County, unfortunately. I implore them to look at this. When you talk to them again, I will reach out to the people I know in those authority positions and put my two cents in. But that's all, I think we've done everything we can, and now hopefully DuPage County will take the ball the rest of the way.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Tolliver?
All right, so a couple of different things. I'll try not to be super long and repeat a lot of things. So to Bridge Street, Pulte, to the Whitaker Farm, everything, I appreciate the time that you guys have taken to meet with us over and over again, including last week, multiple emails, phone calls, text messages, the whole nine yards. So I do appreciate that. I do appreciate the design changes as well. The design changes did persuade some of the people in that neighborhood, and it eased their concerns about their proximity and their privacy issues. With that being said, I specifically want to speak to the residents that are here now. So I just want to say, as your aldermen, I'm incredibly proud of all of you. You have come here week after week. We've met time after time. You guys have voiced your opinion, and that's the way that it's supposed to go. So I commend you all on that, and I am extremely proud to represent you in that entire neighborhood. I don't know how this vote is going to turn out, right? The density itself was not addressed in the latest design, so for that reason and the neighborhood being split, I will be a no vote on this. However, again, I did just want to try to take the time to just acknowledge everybody's work that they put into this, and regardless of how this vote goes tonight, to my constituents, again, just thank you for coming, showing that these things do matter, and that when you are involved in the process, that changes can be made.
All right, I think that concludes the folks wanting to speak on this issue. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
No.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
No.
Nine yes, three no.
Motion carries. That item is approved. Can you read the next item under unfinished business, Madam Clerk?
24-07-09, a resolution approving a preliminary plat and plan for Eola Preserve subdivision located at 620 North Eola Road.
Second.
Been a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any question, discussions on this item? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
No.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
No.
Nine yes, three no.
Motion carries. Resolution is approved. Read the next item.
24-08-10, in ordinance levying taxes for the city of Aurora for the fiscal year January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Been a motion by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Smith. Motion, question, discussion on this item? There being none, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. Alderman Masiacos?
I believe I asked this to be taken off the consent agenda last week, Tuesday, on this item. I want to thank our chief of the treasury here, Mr. Minnick, for taking my call, albeit briefly, and I will, I will agree with him that we've traditionally funded this type of item over time for the city and our employees, but this is a year where we also had an untraditional $16 million gain from the Cyrus 1 development, and I think we could find a gap, we can cover the 3.1 million gap with that funding as well on this one, so. I will be a no vote on this.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
No.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Ten yes, two no.
Motion carries. Orance is adopted. Read the next item.
24-08-13, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to enter into an agreement with Operation Hope to become a service partner as managing agent for the Aurora's promised children's savings account program for a 20-year term in an amount not to exceed $1,983,685.85.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Seville, second by Alderman Franco. Questions or discussions on this item? Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, this is one where I went into it 50/50. I think it's a good concept, but I also think that this somewhat skirts the boundaries of what city government should be doing and would be something that would be better taken up by our school districts to pursue as it deals with education, and that probably a better pro-education move for this council would be to cut back and the number of TIPS that we pass, they siphon millions of dollars out of our schools, and that would be a more pro-education approach to supporting our schools.
Any other questions or discussions on this item? Mr. Mayor? Alderman Masiacos?
Thank you. I think it is a good program. Absolutely, it's a good program, but staff also briefly mentioned the Bright Start program in their presentation last week. The Bright Start program also provides savings accounts that don't cost the families anything when they contribute. There's no fees for it either. And the state of Illinois also provides a $50 seed money to kindergarten, kids coming in for kindergarten, regardless if you're Title I or not. So the entire city of Aurora, all our schools, every kid that is entering kindergarten can get $50 seed money from the state of Illinois, coupled with the fact that the program with this Bright Start... Coupled with the fact that the program with the Bright Start is a program that if the money is not fully utilized at the duration of a kid's education through high school, it could also be transferred into an account. An account that transferred to an IRA account without penalties. So I think it's an opportunity too, that with a fifty-dollar seed money from the state, if we're putting in fifty dollars to, the kids can start out with a hundred dollars in seed money moving forward. So it will be a no vote on this one.
Any other question, discussion, Alderman Smith?
Yeah, I just have a quick question on that, if someone's here that, from this. Isn't Bright Start, isn't there a need for a social security number? And this is net one thing that we are trying to avoid.
Good evening, Viviana Ramirez, Chief Committee Services Officer. Alderwoman Smith, you're absolutely correct. So Bright Start, both Bright Start and the Illinois First Steps do require either a social security number or an I-ten number. Our CSA that we're proposing does not require, require either of those and so that is the largest benefit for all of our Aurora kindergarteners that would fall into that where they don't have a social security or the I-ten number. Further, for Bright Start and the Illinois First, the account holder and the beneficiary both have to have either the social security or I-ten number. That's the biggest difference.
So the program that we're talking about tonight would be the best program for the city of Aurora and the residents of Aurora versus these other two programs in which both parent and child would have to provide some form of identification to move forward with those programs, is that correct?
Absolutely. When we did all the research and Alderman Masiacos' question with the fifty-dollar seed money for the Illinois First Steps, that program also requires though, to activate that account, they have to move it into a five-twenty-nine. So we purposely found a program that all of our children could benefit from regardless of their status. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question. What do you mean by regardless of their status?
So any kindergartner or the parents do not have to have a social security number or an I-ten number because the identifier that is used to open that account for the child is a school ID number.
So they still have, require some type of a number to open up an account even with Operation Hope?
Correct, but it's not a social security or an I-ten number, an individual tax identification number.
And what are we talking about here? Is that, is that an issue, a hurdle?
It could be, that could definitely be a barrier for some children, absolutely.
Do we know how many kids it could be a barrier for? Have we identified how many kids it would be a barrier for, for each?
Alderman Masiacos, all you have to do is look in your own ward to determine. It sounds like Alderman Masiacos-
This is something that can be researched by talking to the school district. If this is something that she brought up, what is it? What, what are we talking about? What's the percentage of the five-hundred estimated kids going into kindergarten? Is your school district one-thirty-one or at one-twenty-nine?
Alderman Masiacos, very respectfully, the goal of this program was to be inclusive. So we didn't look at those numbers, we wanted to bring a program that everybody could benefit from.
Any other questions or comments?
My only comment to that is, you know, to the straight point is if someone is not a citizen and they are here and being educated, they still will be part of this program. So without beating around the bush any further, that's what it means. And that's why we're trying to protect our entire population in the city of Aurora by including them. Eventually, we'll be everyone, but this pilot program, we're starting with the main two school districts in, in the city.
Or the kids get attention.
All right, so that, all right, so Alderman-
I, I just want to clarify, so the two programs that he was referring to, you, you would have to have a social security number. If you didn't, you could not participate in the program. So we'd have to separate, one kid could, one kid couldn't, couldn't because of that.
For the Illinois First Steps and Bright Start, yes.
Okay.
Both the person that opens the account and the beneficiary, the child, both have to have a social security or an I-ten number.
And it's here, you just have to register for school and you're in regardless of status?
That's correct.
Okay, wow, great program, very good program.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, a comment.
I'm sorry, Alderman Barrero.
Yeah, so, so just want to understand this, we, we talked and with your, the other people that are working on this. So my understanding is that we need this agreement with Operation Hope to implement some type of program, right? So if, if we had a, if it was Bright Start or it only first, Illinois First Steps, I mean, somebody has to manage and, and work with the schools and do the outreach and all that. Somebody has to do that, so that's part of it. And, and also by, by starting with this CSA, I think you, you mentioned that, that we could also include these other programs in addition to the CSA. So it's not just a one, a one, you know, one thing that we can do, we can go beyond that.
So first, the Bright Start and the Illinois First Steps, that is handled by the Illinois Treasurer's Office. We have opted for Operation Hope because of their expertise as a program manager in order to manage through US Bank the accounts for the children's savings accounts. At some point, when our children's savings account, the Aurora Promise, once it grows, the parents can elect, if they're eligible with the social security or I-ten, they can roll that over. Any deposits that they make, they can roll over in the future to a five-twenty-nine. For us, what we're trying to do is also create incentives and to help the families, the children through the financial education incentive programs to grow their CSA separately and so that, that's the goal.
So let me, let me rephrase it. So how many of our children, students are participating in one of these state programs now? What, what's the percentage?
So currently, the last data from the Illinois Treasurer's Office showed that Bright Start savings disproportionately used by individuals that are white, educated, male, suburban, middle-aged, earning higher incomes. Black people and Latinos are underrepresented amongst the Bright Start and currently eighty-eight percent are white, eight percent are Asians, and only four percent of the Bright Start users make under thirty thousand dollars a year. And then out of all those numbers, black and Latino only represent two percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Seville.
Mr. Mayor, I thought we had some very good discussions at the council level at the previous meeting and I think what I gleaned for, from that and our conversation on the phone the other day was this program is, is meant to be inclusive, not exclusive. And I think that's the beauty of it and I think that's the type of program that will work here in Aurora. And I think it's a good beginning. I'd like it more to be just a test case, but I know you have to start somewhere. So you have to walk before you run, but I hope you're ready to run soon because I think this will be a great program for our, our children, our community.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Lash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious because we talked about the opt-in versus opt-out. As, the pilot program's gonna be an opt-in, but then in eighteen months, it's gonna turn automatically to opt-out? Or are we gonna have a second vote on that as, as you envision it?
So our goal, what we're starting out with, is we purposely chose an opt-in to allow us time to set the groundwork, to provide the marketing, the education piece, and to really iron out kinks, which is why we're doing opt-in with the two school districts for starters. However, our goal, if everything materializes and progresses the way that we're hoping, eighteen months will allow us to then switch over to the opt-out. And at that point, we're gonna be making sure that all of our school districts, the children, will all be brought into that, even the ones that would normally start right now, but because we're only starting with the two, they will be brought on.
Okay, and, and just so you understand, I mean, what you were describing to Alderman Barrero about, I, I feel like some of the lack of participation probably has more to do with the need for better hands-on information. And I guess, so you understand my thinking, that's where it, it falls into mission creep to where we're gonna have staff over there encouraging people and showing them how to sign up for these programs, which are great, but I just think that that's where it starts to fall outside the bounds of city government. But I do appreciate the, the work that you and the rest of the staff have put into this, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Book.
Thank you. So of course I appreciate this is inclusive and eventually will include all Aurora residents, but in the way that we're going to manage between our, us and our vendor. So, and we discussed, this is for Aurora residents.
Correct.
So if you're going down a street, you have a house of children that are Aurora residents and next to it, you have a house of children that are township residents and not city of Aurora residents. Who is going to go over that information and delineate that, that this house is included and this one is not?
So we are currently reviewing the data sharing agreements that we provided to one-twenty-nine and one-thirty-one. We're giving them the option to review, make some modifications or suggestions. They will, once we have that data sharing agreement in place, it's going to contain the information we need because then we are going to be verifying annually to make sure that the children that are being enrolled fit the criteria for residence.
Okay, that, that they are residents, that they live in the city of Aurora.
Correct.
Okay.
So what we're doing in annual verification-
You say us, will that be turned over to our GIS department and they'll look at it? Or who, who is actually doing that?
We've been working with our GIS, but actually, we're going to have Lizette Hernandez Mendoza, who is the project assistant for the FEC, will be receiving the information annually or the person in that role and will be doing the verification.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Franco.
So those numbers you gave and the percentages of ethnic makeup that are in those programs, those are eye-openers. And I don't think, based on who we are in Aurora, the diversity we are in Aurora, I don't know how we cannot, once we, once we see those numbers, I don't know how we cannot participate in this because we have apparently a need in this community, because the state tells us that, two percent of those minorities are involved, that it's something, I, I wouldn't say that it would be irresponsible if we didn't do it, but I think it's certainly a need that we probably should get involved in. It's just because of who we are, what our makeup is. So I thank you for that because that really puts us over the hump, I think, because we need to get those kids involved. We need to get those parents involved and based on those numbers, that's something that pretty much should be on ours to, to take care of.
Mr. Alexander.
Just two quick additions. First off, to Alderman Bug's discussion about the, the checks and balances, one of the express purposes of the data sharing agreement is that both parties, the city and the school district respectively, third, one-thirty-one, one-twenty-nine, will work collaboratively to make sure that data is not only shared appropriately, but that it's accurate and that it's consistently reviewed so that we're making sure that this inclusivity is also accurate. And so that will, not gonna be done one time, it'll be done throughout this process. And second, we're missing another key component that other communities have proven can be done. And that is the contributions of the private sector where many of these communities, companies have successfully stepped up and raised additional funds and donated additional funds to build up this initial seed effort that the city is doing, that we're asking you to propose. So it's not just a reliance on the city, but you see in other communities that have successfully done this, it's a collaboration and a partnership. And most importantly, it's an investment in the young folks in a community. And, and we're also looking frankly to expand our financial empowerment center's role in all of this because as part of the process, her very talented staff at the FEC is looking forward to this opportunity to discuss additional financial literacy opportunities with the parents. So it's not just, here's your fifty dollars and we pat them on the back and off they go. This is hopefully the start of a lifelong endeavor. Not everybody has this opportunity. And so the fact that we have been able to craft this the way we have, it's all part of, again, one of the pillars that we've talked about and that's the, our economy and the economic well-being of our folks and, and workforce development. But it all starts with financial literacy. And one-thirty-one ecstatic about this opportunity. They were ready, they're ready to start three months ago. And we wanted to make sure we got the right partner in Operation Hope, which we believe we do, and the pilot program that we've put together.
Just so, can we clear this, I'm sorry, Alderman Barrero.
Can I make one more comment?
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to mention that one of the big goals over East Aurora School District was the graduation rate and that went from, you know, mid-sixties to ninety-one percent this, this past year. That's huge. What is the outcome of that? I mean, what's, what's the benefit to the community? I can tell you that there's a lot less crime, kids are graduating, they're getting jobs. I mean, that's another huge benefit. So if this program can help more kids, you know, set their sights on graduating, going to college or whatever, whatever else they have in mind, I mean, that's a great thing. I mean, that's a huge benefit to the community. So I just want to add that as an additional plus.
You know, I'll finish up by agreeing with everything you just said, Alderman Barrero. Thomas Jefferson said, "The care of people's lives and their happiness must be the first and only legitimate objective of good government." And here in Aurora, we practice good government. And it's not taking a small-minded view of what one Alderman thinks government should be. It's looking at the big picture and the long-term of what we should do to ensure the happiness and well-being of all of our residents. You know, partnering with our educational institutions and ensuring that our young people from a young age have a chance for a successful future is our, not only, not only something that local government should be doing, it's our responsibility because it helps our future. It provides for a strong workforce in the future when we have more kids that are educated. As Alderman Barrero pointed out, if more kids are engaged in whether it's college or trades or, or certificate programs, that's less kids on the street committing crime. We know most crime is committed by young people. This is exactly what we're supposed to be doing to ensure a successful future for our city. And that's why we've been working on this, not just for the last month or two months. This is something we've been working on for a year, scouring this country, finding the best practices of other communities that have recognized this same thing. And when we found them, we decided to implement those same ideas in the city of Aurora. Matter of fact, we went to one of the best ones in the entire country and out of Atlanta and we brought their partners to the city of Aurora Hope so they can give us the same opportunities that, 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 that city had, you know, in, in the South where they've had the opportunity to have, as you point, as was pointed out, five years of success. We're just getting started. And although we're doing this pilot program today, our goal is to have every kindergarten starting in the city of Aurora taking part in this program, every single one. Why? Because it'll give them a hope for their future. If we start talking to kids now about the fact that they have a, a savings account for college and they know that at kindergarten and first grade and second grade and third grade, that's a, that's a kid that has something to look forward to in the future. And we know in Aurora, unfortunately, we have a large percent of our population that live at or below a poverty level. Black and brown people in the center of our city, which you've heard the statistics, that only about two percent even participate in programs like this. If we, the city of Aurora, not relying on the state and some program and hopes that somebody else do it, but we take, we take it, the responsibility into our own hands to ensure a better future, why the heck wouldn't we do that? And if we had the means and the ability to do it, which we do, it's our responsibility. So let's folk, let's think about, let's vote on our future. Let's vote on our young kids. Let's vote on Aurora today when we take this vote. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
No.
Alderman Donnell.
Bill.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
No.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Ten yes, two no.
Motion carries, this is, this item is approved. Resolution is approved, read the next item.
Twenty-four, zero, eight, nine, one, a resolution authorizing the execution of an addendum, addendum to a Phase Two Design Engineering Services Contract with H.R. Green in the not-to-exceed amount of two-hundred-fifty-six-thousand, two-hundred-ninety-one dollars and nine cents for the Farnsworth Vilter Church roadway widening, resurfacing and inter- and nine cents for the Farnsworth-Belter Church roadway widening, resurfacing and interception improvement.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Are there any question or discussions on this item? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
No.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Motion carries, resolution is approved, that concludes unfinished business. There are no items under new business, there are no reports to, to-
Second.
To talk about this, there's been a motion to pay our bills by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions on the bills, any motions to remove any items from the bills, there being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bog.
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe.